And we'll call the January nineteen meeting of the municipal council. Please rise and have your files.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Councilmember Lusorti, here. Councilmember Clausen, here. Councilmember Alexander, here. Councilmember Conklin, here. Councilmember Brinker, here. Councilmember Brannon, here. Mayor Long.
Here. Upon all the minutes from the January fifth, twenty twenty six meeting.
Senator, your honor, I saw one of the state for the meeting started seven forty, it started at seven.
When amendment motion for the expression, and I amend it, and there you say, I'm not.
Yeah.
You have a motion for a second. Any questions or comments on the motion? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Lusorti, yes. Councilmember Clausen, yes. Councilmember Alexander, yes. Councilmember Conklin.
Yes.
Councilmember Brinker, yes. Councilmember Brannon, yes. Mayor Long.
Yes.
Um, I'd like to make an amendment to our agendas. The proper word would be there.
Motion to add to the.
Motion to add to our agenda. On lieu of our executive meeting tonight, um, we'd like to put paperwork of vote on, um.
Oh, we do vote on adding to the agenda first, correct? It's got a motion to add to the agenda?
Second.
I'll second. Second. Call for the vote.
Councilmember Lusorti, no. Councilmember Clausen, yes. Councilmember Alexander, yes. Councilmember Conklin, no. Councilmember Brinker, yes. Councilmember Brannon, no. Mayor Long.
Yes.
Necessary to state what's being added and the reason why. But I thought that was a second motion. Fine, as long as you.
Okay, yeah. You can. Um, I'd like to make a motion to the agenda that we lieu of the executive council meeting that we had prior, uh, to our meeting tonight, uh, that we terminate our city manager.
To suspend this.
Suspend him and terminate him.
Okay. I'm gonna second. I'll second. Second motion. Comments?
I'd just like to make a comment that, um, I disagree with how this is being handled at this point in time and, um, just want my disagreement to be honored.
Fair enough.
Thank you.
I would also like my disagreement on record. There was a lot of opportunity before this to try and rectify this in a way that did not end in this. And the people choosing to end this way chose to not do those other steps.
I'm in opposition as well, and this is a rule of retribution.
Any else? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Lusorti, no. Councilmember Clausen, yes. Councilmember Alexander, yes. Councilmember Conklin, no. Councilmember Brinker, yes. Councilmember Brannon, no. Mayor Long.
Yes. Other comment here.
Before you move on, Mayor, I think you need to read through the actual resolution to do that.
Okay, fair enough. Uh. Well, the resolution, whereas the City of Lock Haven is third class, city governed by optional third-class charter law, and whereas the optional third-class charter law provides for the removal of city manager by majority vote of city council and further provides procedures relevant thereto. And whereas the city council, because the council of the City of Lock Haven has determined that is in best interest of City of Lock Haven to remove Gregory J. Wilson as city manager of the City of Lock Haven. Now therefore, he has resolved as follows. One, Gregory J. Wilson is preliminary removed preliminarily from his position as city manager of the City of Lock Haven and is suspended from duty effective immediately. Two, the reasons for removal of Gregory J. Wilson as city manager as follows. On inadequate communications, council regarding matters within the city's decision-making and/or advisory purview. Two, lack of cooperation in the city's interaction with neighboring municipalities. Three, contributing and unnecessary discussion and animosity between city presidents and businesspeople. Four, lack of confidence in city manager leadership direction of the city. Five, contributing to an atmosphere of distrust between city employees and city officials. Number three, Gregory Wilson may reply within writing and may request a public hearing, which shall be held not earlier than twenty days nor later than thirty days after filing such request. Four, after such public hearing, if one is requested, and at the full consideration, the council shall consider whether to adopt the final resolution of removal. Five, Gregory J. Wilson shall be paid any unpaid balance of this salary and the salary for the next three calendar months following adoption of this preliminary resolution. resolved on nineteenth day of January twenty twenty six. Do I have a motion?
Second. Motion for a second. Comments? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Lusorti, no. Councilmember Clausen, yes. Councilmember Alexander, yes. Councilmember Conklin, no. Councilmember Brinker, yes. Councilmember Brannon, no. Mayor Long.
Yes. Thank you. Other comments or requests for a comments and residence to state that fair.
Excuse me, Mayor, I don't know if this is the proper spot in your meeting, but it's in regard to unfinished business.
Uh, if you want to wait till we get to that, then we will be all together. I mean, you can do it now, you're with it.
Okay. Uh, I'm looking at your unfinished business and it came to my attention this morning as I was looking, because I'm gonna come back to you maybe in a couple of weeks here, because I want to put a flagpole on. And I see that the Capital Water Project, our contract is being rejected and rebid. We've never been notified, we've never had a bid review, we've never had anything. And in the meantime, our complete bid has been put on the street, meaning that all my competitors, if I rebid this thing, know exactly what my numbers are. I have no protection on a rebid. And which I still don't know why we're not getting the contract, seeing we're the only contract that's under budget. The rest of them are over budget, and ours is six hundred thousand dollars under the projected budget. Seeing, you know, you know, I'm thinking I'm doing really good for the city, saving six hundred thousand dollars, and now my bid's being rejected. You're rejecting a bid of people that live here, work here, pay taxes here, and I still have no idea why we're being rejected. We never had a bid review from the, the engineer, never got a letter of rejection, nothing. So I'm kind of a little out of sorts of why this is happening without justification. And, you know, a month has rolled by. I could have bid other work. It's held up two point eight million dollars worth of my bonding capability in the most critical time of the year for us, the bid season. So I want to just have my piece before this vote, why this is happening.
I understand. How you're involved in any of the bids?
Um, I was involved a little bit with former manager Wilson when no more. What I could say though was that the bid was rich. Well, first of all, we don't usually, you wouldn't get a letter until we formally take council action. Um, I wasn't directly involved, but our city engineers were, and I apologize for them not being in touch with you um, in between the month between. Um, the letter in your packet states that the, your packet date, the council packet, um, the bid was rejected, all bids were rejected, but, um, your bid was incorrect and canopic. Um, due to the boring percentage versus the excavation percentage. Um, so if there's an issue with that, if you have something different saying that, then.
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Means methods, it's, it's in the bid packet. So my knowledge of the site, the fact that I'm five minutes from the site, I've lived here my entire fifty-seven years. I know what McQuillan is. I know how much I can drill, how much I have to open cut, because it's physically not possible dollar-wise to drill some of these sections. So what I did is I made a clarification in our bid, so the engineer was aware of how much that we could drill, how much we could not drill. This is due to my knowledge of the site. I literally hand dug under two twenty when I was twenty-some years old, because it's all rock. It's not drillable material. It's in, it's in their bid pack. This is your means and methods. It says excavation regardless, already here. So we've been in confidence that we could dig sections and it's set up to dig sections that are not drillable. So I wanted that, I wanted him to know that it was clear that some of these sections would have to be done that way. That's not incorrect bidding, that's smart bidding, which incidentally saved you six hundred thousand dollars from the second bid. You know, using my knowledge and what we do, what we know has saved the city already six hundred thousand.
And noted, I would suggest, I don't know anything further, but I would suggest then, um.
Perhaps we should go up with the engineer.
Yes.
And, uh, yeah, try to get deeper into it. Um, we don't have to take action on it tonight. We can always push it to another meeting, um, and find out from the engineer. That'd be prudent.
Sure.
All right.
I would like to request the engineer's prejudice.
Absolutely, I think that would be.
At the end of the meeting.
Let's tell you where we're over here.
Yeah, I understand. But I think you have to spend a little on the meeting.
Well, I appreciate the, the extra time, because I mean, there's a lot of effort goes into this, and there's a lot of thinking that goes into it. And to be rejected once a project for us, this is really hurtful in a lot of ways to our company as well as folks we all know and work for us. So just wanted to thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Any other comments in residence, say that. Okay. Four B, use of Triangle Park, February seventh, under one soup and chili cook-off.
The Clinton County Community Assembly is requesting use of Triangle Park on February seventh for a soup and chili cook-off fundraiser. Fundraiser will encourage the public to make a food or monetary donation to sample and vote entries, and there will be baked goods available for donations. The fundraiser will run from ten AM to one PM. I will work with organizers, we also request a rain date of three twenty eight.
Any quick seconds?
I will second.
And we, and then motions also, the rain date.
Yes.
Okay. Motion for a second, any question or comments?
Call for the vote.
Councilmember Lusorti, yes. Councilmember Clausen, yes. Councilmember Alexander, yes. Councilmember Conklin, yes. Councilmember Brinker, yes. Councilmember Brannon, yes. Mayor Long.
Yes.
Four C, resolution number twenty twenty six dash zero one.
This is a resolution to install a banner from March twelfth through March thirtieth for Ross Library Book Sale, which will be taking place March twenty-sixth through twenty-eighth.
Do I have a motion?
I have the approval. Second.
Motion for a second, any questions, comments on the motion? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Lusorti, yes. Councilmember Clausen, yes. Councilmember Alexander, yes. Councilmember Conklin, yes. Councilmember Brinker, yes. Councilmember Brannon, yes. Mayor Long.
Yes.
Four D, use, uh, of Lock Haven, the, uh, March fourteenth, rain dates March twenty-first, uh, tend to the Piper Museum egg drop.
Addies, um, Marlene Gladon of Addies is requesting use of the airport on March fourteenth with a rain date of March twenty-first from ten AM to ten two PM for a community egg drop to support the Piper Aviation Museum. This will be for participants of all ages and will have local vendors and kids activities and prizes. They, their goal is to have a small plane engine drop eggs over the Piper Airport for participants to gather. Um, I will have to talk with our insurance agency, because I know we've had other issues that we needed to run by them. So, um, as long as they get the approval as well, or what the Addies will need to provide for us, so.
So, um, we could do a motion to do a contingent on what you find out.
Table it until we find.
They want to get started planning. So it would mostly be what they need to provide us for their coverage of the ships.
Are they for plastic egg morsels or not?
I think so. They're gonna be there.
Seven. Have a motion? Second. For a second, a second on that. Any further comments or questions? For the vote.
Councilmember Lusorti, yes. Councilmember Clausen, yes. Councilmember Alexander, yes. Councilmember Conklin, yes. Councilmember Brinker, yes. Councilmember Brannon, yes. Mayor Long.
Yes.
Four E, use of Zindel Park, June twelfth for the Emerson wedding.
Catherine Emerson is requesting the use of Zindel Park on June twelfth, twenty twenty-six for a small wedding, and I'll work with them to make sure all rules and regulations are followed.
Let's switch up.
I have approval.
Second. Motion for a second, any comments or questions on this motion? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Lusorti, yes. Councilmember Clausen, yes. Councilmember Alexander, yes. Councilmember Conklin, yes. Councilmember Brinker, yes. Councilmember Brannon, yes. Mayor Long.
Yes.
Four F, closure of North Westbury Street from East Main to Jordan's Alley, June twenty-seventh, eight AM to eleven PM for Pride and the Haven.
Uncle Owls is requesting the closure of North Westbury Street from Main Street to Jordan's Alley on June twenty-seventh from eight AM to eleven PM for Pride and the Haven. This event will feature vendors, food, entertainment, and if approved, I will work with them to ensure paperwork, permits are filed, and coordinated public works for the banner teams.
Yeah, I think that's a good one as well.
I have a something to, to request.
Sure.
Um, I know Mark put this in, um, because it's from Uncle Owls, but last year we needed more than from Main to Jordan's Alley. We, we were supposed to request the entire, uh, section there.
Main to church.
Main to church. Um.
You mean main to water.
Yes, sorry, sorry.
Seventeen across.
So last year we ended up having a, a huge waitlist for vendors, because the event has grown so substantially. We did bring in over five hundred people to downtown. Um, and it was one of the things, it was Saturdays of the summer, uh, per business owners. So, um, I just wanted to see.
Looked like a real love life.
Yeah.
So, um, she wasn't the quester, but we amend the request. Is council open to the, the?
Well, I'd say amend the request now, because I think we had quite a discussion last year about the, when we had, um,
jams.
When we had jams, that there was a discussion about how traffic was moving through, because that's the biggest issue people have, is how does traffic deal with the closed alley. And I think it went okay during jams.
Yeah, I think.
I mean, so I, I think.
That's the alley open.
Yeah, and you see, it happens to be the alley open.
Yeah, we just need barricades before and after the alley. And we'll need a second reading and what.
Right. Okay, so, so we, we have a, we have a motion.
Can I make a motion to, um, approve this as I amended with the closure from Main to Water on North Westbury Street?
Leaving the alley, leaving the alley.
Okay, go a second.
I'll second.
I have a second. Motion for a second, any other questions or comments? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Lusorti, yes. Councilmember Clausen, yes. Councilmember Alexander, yes. Councilmember Conklin, yes. Councilmember Brinker, yes. Councilmember Brannon, yes. Mayor Long.
Yes. We have any other questions?
No, we aren't. No.
Uh, the P A Trail Dogs and Craig Fleming are requesting use of Zindel Park for their nighttime trail race, Ice Schools on the Moon, on December nineteenth, twenty twenty-six. The race will begin at five PM and be approximately nine miles with a shorter distance for beginners and kids offered. Uh, the race will be the same route as last year, and all racers will be required to have headlamps or a form of light. Um, the attached route is on the back.
All right, I didn't notice that, I got missed. So, all right, do we have a motion?
I have a motion. I'll second.
Okay. A motion for a second, questions or comments on the motion?
There, I've heard a lot of comments from people who did it this past year. They said it was phenomenal. People really, really enjoyed it. It was a very, very nice and very well-done event. The Trail Dogs always do a great job.
Good.
About insurance, same with the egg drop. Should, there's gonna be a lot.
They always provide insurance with this, yeah.
But contingent on that, of course.
Yeah.
Anything else? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Lusorti, yes. Councilmember Clausen, yes. Councilmember Alexander, yes. Councilmember Conklin, yes. Councilmember Brinker, yes. Councilmember Brannon, yes. Mayor Long.
Yes. Now do we have any? No more on here. Thank you.
Unfinished business, uh, appointments to the city's authorities and boards, commissions.
I don't have a paper for that.
The paper, it is on this P D act.
It's on the P D act.
I remember reading it, but it's not.
It is the only position that we were still up in, up with the city authority, whether Karen was staying on or not staying on, and someone was, you guys would have talked to her.
Yeah, I, I did talk to her, she's very interesting.
Then I say we vote on it and we move on.
Okay, so we're, uh, accepting this list with the addition, Karen Kino on the city authority. Right?
Correct.
Is that a motion?
Yes, that's a motion.
That's, and a second. Any questions? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Lusorti, no. Councilmember Clausen, yes. Councilmember Alexander, yes. Councilmember Conklin, yes. Councilmember Brinker, yes. Councilmember Brannon, yes. Mayor Long.
Yes. Uh, we're gonna hold off on the section here on the water projects part. Um, I think we should have a meeting next week anyway, so it's not scheduled, we can do that, and then you can flesh us out on it.
Do you want to take care of B three and four, or would you rather wait on those?
Would you, would you advise that we go ahead and do those, that can affect anything as far as the person's concern?
No, not that I'm aware of. Okay.
All right, so we'll look at, uh, B two, authorize, well, that, not that, excuse me. B three, approve the issuance of the notice of intent to award, uh, for the general mechanical work.
Joel, do we need to move the table of the first two?
Well, I think you only have the table, and Justin, you can, if, if a motion was made, if we just don't act on it, we can still bring it back, right?
Well, yeah, it probably would be clearer if you, if you table it, since they're on the agenda, so that.
Fair enough.
In some way, yeah.
Or would you like to make a motion to table B one and two?
I do, I'm going to table with B one and B two, so we can further consult with the end news.
All right, do I have a second to table that?
Second.
Call for the vote.
Councilmember Lusorti, yes. Councilmember Clausen, yes. Councilmember Alexander, yes. Councilmember Conklin, yes. Councilmember Brinker, yes. Councilmember Brannon, yes. Mayor Long.
Yes.
Give them that now. Three, the, uh, approval, uh, proof issuance of the notice of intent to award the contract twenty-five point five, that's zero four, the general mechanic work. And that was to, uh, C N R directional boring. Do I have a motion?
So I, from my understanding, like this won't affect anything that partners have, right? No. I'll make a motion.
Have a motion.
I'll second.
And a second. Any questions or comments? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Lusorti, yes. Councilmember Clausen, yes. Councilmember Alexander, yes. Councilmember Conklin, no. Councilmember Brinker, yes. Councilmember Brannon. No. Mayor Long.
Yes.
Um, B four, proof issuance of the notice of intent to award contract twenty twenty-five dash zero five, electric work, uh, athletic construction services. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
And motion for floor and a second. Questions or comments? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Lusorti, yes. Councilmember Clausen, yes. Councilmember Alexander, yes. Councilmember Conklin, no. Councilmember Brinker, yes. Councilmember Brannon, no. Mayor Long.
Yes.
Okay, five C, resolution number twenty twenty-six, that's zero three, like, depends, um, four point one four million for waste product treatment improvements. Do I have a motion? Sure. Motion for a second, questions or comments on that motion? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Lusorti, yes. Councilmember Clausen, yes. Councilmember Alexander, yes. Councilmember Conklin, yes. Councilmember Brinker, yes. Councilmember Brannon, yes. Mayor Long.
Yes.
Five D, agreement between city and, uh, twenty twenty-three C D V D recipient family service association. So you have some information.
Yeah, this is a sub-recipient agreement with the Family Service Association. Um, from the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, C D V G application, council approved, um, to allocate fifteen thousand dollars to Family Service Association of Northeastern Pennsylvania, um, to support their two-one-one helpline. Um, this just further cements this, it's a sub-recipient agreement that's required by D C T between the grantee and the, um, organization. Um, it just solidifies what you loaded on back in twenty twenty-three.
Okay. Do I have a motion to this?
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
Motion for a second, do we have any questions or comments about the motion? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Lusorti, yes. Councilmember Clausen, yes. Councilmember Alexander, yes. Councilmember Conklin, yes. Councilmember Brinker, yes. Councilmember Brannon, yes. Mayor Long.
Yes.
Five E, D C N R grant award notice for Hannah Park.
Um, last week we received notice from D C N R that we were awarded two hundred fifteen thousand um, in grant funding for the Hannah Park improvement project. Um, this couples with um, twenty twenty-four C D V G money, about one hundred ninety-seven thousand, and twenty twenty-five C D V G money. Sorry, one hundred twenty thousand from twenty twenty-four and one hundred ninety-seven thousand from twenty twenty-five, read that wrong, for a total of five hundred thirty-two thousand, three hundred sixty-three dollars in improvements for Hannah Park. Uh, once we get, the twenty twenty-five C D V G contract is still pending, and once we get the D C R contract, we can get started. That will just be, um, improvements, as you've already heard, to the restroom, um, playground, walking path, some additional pickleball courts, and new basketball court.
Um, so what, what are we taking action on?
I wonder if that should, that should not have an action item.
Okay, thank you, I'm sorry, that was Mark's an action item. Okay. Thank you, by the way. Um, F, resolution number twenty twenty-six, that's zero four, to apply for Creative Communities Initiative.
Uh, this is, um, a resolution, I mean, actually not to apply, but to, to certify, um, that the, the city will be involved and, um, contribute the match. So we did apply last year, and with the budget impasse, we knew we were awarded, but I couldn't say anything to you all. So now I'm saying it, we received twenty-five thousand dollars in grant funding for the city over the course of four years. So a hundred thousand dollars in total to be used to further the, the development of the active arts corridor. Um, there is a one-to-one match with that, so the resolution states that So the resolution states that the city is, um, contributing twenty-five thousand per year for after four years as local match. Um, are there, that is coming from other sources that is not directly out of the general fund, although a portion may be. Um, for example, my, my time is, can be used for local match. So that's going to be paid out of budget that uses match. Um, so this resolution is required for the grant program and just, um, kind of reconvicts us to that. So I'll submit that to the grant program director and get started.
Do I have a motion?
I'll second.
Questions, comments on the motion?
I just want to comment, it's been a couple of years of really hard work of looking for places to put bike lanes in the city and looking for places to ride the scooters and all those kinds of things. And this is getting us, getting us there and having just done great on this. So thank you and looking forward to it.
You know, yeah, one of the act.
Yeah. But it's been, it's been a really great and interesting project and it'll be great to see it come to fruition within that. I think it will benefit a lot of people.
Trying to retrofit the city.
Yes.
Any other questions or comments? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Missouri, yes. Councilmember Clausen?
Yes.
Councilmember Alexander?
Yes.
Councilmember Conklin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brinker?
Yes.
Councilmember Brandon?
Yes.
Mayor Long?
Yes. Five G, the, uh, homeowner in letter for the D C D. Great if you would speak on that, I appreciate, thank you.
Sure, there are. Um, we received a packing letter in response to our response to the monitoring. Um, the idea, our finding here, um, is the amount to be repaid to D C D for misuse of funds and this is in result to, um, income documentation for the homeowner. This is in, to be repaid in the amount of seventy-six thousand dollars, eight hundred sixty-five. Seventy-six thousand, eight hundred sixty-five dollars and eighty-four cents. Um, and then there are also more findings that are administrative. Um, we have continually worked with C D C O G who administer a program and we are in constant coll, um, collaboration with them on responding to this. Um, we did, former manager Wilson did budget for this seventy-six thousand. So we are grateful for that. That doesn't need to be adjusted. So, um, we're good to go. Everything else will be, um, attended to directly.
Okay.
What, what exactly happened here? How do we do this from happening?
Well. We see in our work, we see a call to, uh, monitor C V, C V G, um, home rent, that, that do improvements to properties that qualify correctly. And they missed a few eye dots and key crossing things that caused it to come back during the monitoring. Um, and we have to stay back because of us not correctly.
Where do we have a place to keep that from happening?
Well, I think we're looking at someone different to do that.
We're looking at alternatives for our home program. Um, we, with this action, kind of related to this, D C D did terminate our home program, um, grant, which was a hundred thousand dollars from twenty-twenty. It was going to end in June this year anyway, so we wouldn't have really had another project in the works. Um. But, uh, we're looking at, uh, possibly step to, uh, administer our, any future home funds in the future. Um, they have experience with it. I will, um, repeatedly state that this, the home division of C D C O G is different than the C D V G division. Um, and we have no reason to not trust the C D V G, C D V G division. Um, as of right now, it's totally unrelated to this contract. Um, but yet we will respond accordingly to this. We're taking our business elsewhere and keeping, uh, an eye on it. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Any other unfinished business? New business, six-eight, consideration ordinance number twenty-two-six, that's zero on life, uh, life assistance. Yes, I think you.
Okay. So the intent of this ordinance is to curb some of the misuse and abuse of our lifting assistance program. Uh, and this isn't a local issue. It's a nationwide issue with fire departments that have lift assist programs. So lift assist program, as we go out, maybe an elderly person falls at home, they just need help up, they're not injured. Uh, we, so we pick them up and go on about the day. Uh, these type of calls account for nearly forty percent of our call volume. So it's substantial. The issue comes when these people call constantly, you know, three or four times a week. They need to have additional help with them, not be calling the fire department all the time. The same way goes for nursing homes, medical facilities. They're calling us, we're not a staffing agency, right? Uh, so that's the intent of the ordinance. The fee would be after a third call per year, it's fifty dollars. Fourth call is a hundred dollars and five more calls per year, this two-hundred-dollar fee. There's two-hundred-fifty-dollar fee for any medical facility or nursing home that calls us requesting assistance. That's basically the gist of it. I don't have a problem saying anything. No, well, I have an example if you would like to hear that.
Anything you can add, fine. Perfect. Anything you can add would be great.
This was a few years ago. Went to one of our high-rise facilities for lifting assistance. Was like between one and three in the morning. I don't remember the exact time. But I walked up to the apartment's door and noticed the name on the door was familiar to me. So I went in, it was an elderly lady, she needed assistance. I did the normal routine of, you know, are you hurt? All that stuff, sitting up, just need help up. So I helped her up and then I said, are you Bob Neff's mother? Well, yes, I am. Said, okay. I said, why didn't you call Bob then to come and help you instead of the fire department? Oh, well, he has to get up and go to work in the morning. I didn't bother him. Okay. So I left. Stayed calm, believe it or not. Left. And since I knew this gentleman, I acquired his phone number. Three nights later, the same thing. So I sat up in bed, picked my phone up. Hey, Bob, I'm going to your mother's apartment to help pick her up off the floor. I'll see you there. Goodbye. I'm not. Bob came to help and that's the last time we went there for lifting assistance. So that's some of the, and that's just one instance of hundreds that I can tell you that we go to and sometimes you walk in and now we've been there so many times, we know the lady's name. Know the lady by her first name when you walk in. So Tyler is correct, it's not just our problem. It's a problem everywhere. And we have enough problem finding firemen and put out fires that are fun, much less going to help pick up Mr. Smith, Mrs. Smith at three o'clock in the morning.
I don't, um, disagree that it's an issue. Um, my brother works at the call center and he tells us the story. So I don't disagree that it's an issue. I do have one concern is that I do know, I have a story, um, of uh, a resident that they were trying to keep their family member at home and they did call lifting assistance, for lifting assistance, a couple of times through, in short lifetime from when he was sick till he died. But they always gave a donation to the fire hall that came to respond. So my only concern is the fact that there are residents that, you know, are trying to care for their elderly family outside of being in a home and they do compensate for the fact that they are calling for lifting assistance. So how, like, what would, how would that, how would that look for you? So you would still be charging them?
Right.
Okay.
It's gonna be straight across the board, everyone gets the same treatment.
Okay. But everybody gets three, right? Three bucks.
Two.
The third one's fifty dollars. So everybody gets two calls. So if you called once and we go, that, and you understand, look, we're cut, well, you know. And then by the time the second one happens, I don't know what other resources we have to have to say to people, this is going to be something you're going to have to start paying for. And we, just so people know, perhaps you could give people a letter or something.
Yes. And we do the same thing with our auto alarm incidents, uh, falls the same billing schedule. And then that instance for automatic alarm, we give them a piece of paper, a form they sign it and they understand, you know, bill's going to be coming the next time. So we do the same thing with this one.
Okay. Good. Any other questions?
I'd like to get first. You actually get calls from hospitals and nursing homes?
Yes, we do.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Not the days I work there. We have people that are there.
Yeah, I don't have a, of a problem to go to a nursing home failing lift. My challenge is a senior who falls multiple times, they don't have family living around here to help them or a neighbor to help them, uh, to just continue to increase it. I, I get it, I, I've got elderly parents, my, my nurse has put in a, uh, a chairlift, you get up and down the steps. I, I think they might need to reconsider and continue to adding. These give maybe some multiple ones or can they buy insurance? Can they, they buy a package of so many lifts? It's, it, it's gonna add up. It could add up. And you, as you said, there's multiple people like that maybe doing in a year have multiples, like, is there anybody has like ten or?
Oh, yeah, there's a.
Yeah, there's a same.
Yeah, I saw like twenty-three. Is that the same person?
Yes.
At this point, there's two, four, six, eight, and twelve.
Are most of these elderly? So my question is, um, so when you, what has anyone, uh, when they start to multiply like this, has anyone tried to get you out to like the center for the aging? You do, okay.
Yes. So you start to see a pattern?
Yeah.
Then make call, make, start making calls to the office of A, B, C, step, whatever.
And what, what are their suggestions? Like, what do they, do they try to?
We just pass the information on, but they do.
Okay.
We have no idea.
But you still, in the meantime, once you have reported that or went to the office of A, you still see the progression of them calling and you going? Okay.
Usually.
Okay.
The office of the aging's answer is, this person is of sound mind and there's nothing that we can do to make them go somewhere else.
Okay.
And I've heard that numerous times.
Yeah.
When I've called, you know, I've called and gone to the office of the aging personally about people that have, that we've done this and they're they're saying, you know, well, this person is of sound mind, so we can't make them do anything they want to do.
And like, again, like, I completely understand where you guys are coming from and especially speaking on, um, Mill Hall, you guys can't be, there's other things you guys need to be doing. Um, I just, you know, you're, I have a heart for the elderly who, again, I see in my job regularly, you know, they come in just because that's somewhere to communicate, that's somewhere that someone will talk to you. So my heart's with elderly that just maybe doesn't have family that cares enough to spend time with them. And again, I understand that's not your guys' fault and there's other things you guys need to be doing. I just, and I'm with Jeff, like, I feel like the facilities, I mean, that is unnecessary. I just have a little bit of a bigger heart when it comes to the private residence. I'm sorry.
Well, I'd like to move ordinance number twenty-two-six oh one because I am an elderly or soon fast becoming one. And I, I still appreciate the fact that it, there has to be at least a line brought. It's not like if there's a, if there's somebody that, that's, you know, it's not like they're gonna say, well, I'm sorry you didn't pay us for the last time, so we're not coming this time. What they're trying to do is create a, a record where they do at least give some reimbursement for those costs. And, and look, I, I know a number of other fire departments throughout central Pennsylvania that don't respond at all anymore. That's not a required response for them.
Right.
So, you know, I, I think this is at least an attempt to make something happen.
Your, your main motion.
There's a lot, there's some discussion here of concern on this. I would like to make a motion that we actually.
You already have a motion on the floor. Have to deal with that motion before I accept anyone else's motion.
Understood.
Okay. Have a motion, do I have a second, Chris?
I have a second motion.
You, you doing it? Okay, so. A motion for discussion on the motion, it's on the floor. Questions, comments?
I don't commit. Good, now.
You can talk about it, but you can't make the motion.
Talk about what you want to.
Yeah, talk about what you want, you're, you're, sorry.
Yeah.
I would like to, uh, pass section D and include section E to next week to have some time to think about. Because I'm looking, I did the math in my head. Um, this, this floor, first on Summit, South Summit Street with two hundred, with about twenty-three visits, that they would be paying three thousand nine hundred fifty dollars in a year. For an elderly person, that's just, that's a lot of money for somebody that obviously doesn't have, or well, I would assume doesn't have a family around to, um, come and help. They probably are struggling. Um. Obviously, I want to see something in place for you down there. It, 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 this is out of hand, but.
I think the bigger, the bigger question is that our fire department is out at least twice, well, to one particular residence twice a month. And while they're out doing that, they are not able to do the other fire calls that are of vital importance. And so therefore, the residents and taxpayers of the city of Long Haven are paying the money for these folks to get the kind of in-home healthcare that really should be coming from some other service besides the fire department. And I think that it's fiscally more responsible for us to say, look, we're gonna go twice, we're gonna send the letter, we're gonna report it to the office for the aging. And if, if this is how you can afford your lift services, thirty-nine hundred dollars a year, quite honestly, if you've gone out to try to hire a home health person, because I also have elderly parents who have spent the whole last year dealing with crisis issues. And thirty-nine hundred dollars isn't really too bad to have, uh, care in your home coming to do things for you, you know, to lift you and do, and do this. So I think that as opposed to this, as opposed to it be, being paid for by the residents and city taxpayers that the individual unfortunately needs to take some responsibility for the cost of their physical care, if that's what comes, if that's what comes to. I hope it doesn't. I hope that people see this as more of a deterrent and seek out the proper care that they actually, because there are services in the community to help.
And one more concern I have here, this is annual, I mean, that resets every January first, so it's gonna make Q one kind of busy for you guys, right? The, the freebies start again. Um, I mean, I, I'd almost rather see the two freebies and then it doesn't reset, but maybe not see that two hundred dollars, but cap it at one hundred. Is that more reasonable?
Well, you'd have to convince him because he needs a motion if he wants to change his motion. You can. Table the motion. But then you have to get a second, we have to vote, and if they don't, then we move on this motion. Am I correct, Mr. Spitzer?
I, I think your, your command of the rule support is very good there.
Thank you.
So, could you guess that, but I didn't want to.
Do I have a second to table the motion?
I I would like to see, now, I have my table and I I'll put it up for vote, but I would like to see the, the dollar figure changed to this fifty dollars, straight across the board. Is it the fifth time that we, you know, to two hundred, I don't, is the finance is going to be the? Is it the fifth time that we, you know, the two hundred, I don't, this finance is going to be the determining factor for them not to become you know, just continue to penalize if we go two hundred, why don't we just go three hundred and four hundred each time? But I think we ought to just be fifty.
Those have to have two, but.
Yeah. Um.
So there's no second to table the motion?
I'm, I'm open to, to let it go to vote and then if it fails, then I'd like to see just the fifty dollars.
That's the other option, is if we go through that, if it were failed, then you could offer your own motion of some kind of again, unless Conklin is willing to amend his motion anyway. Okay.
All that enough to the professionals that make those ones, I appreciate it.
Fair enough. Okay, call for the vote.
Councilmember Missouri. Yes. Councilmember Clausen.
No.
Councilmember Alexander. No. Councilmember Conklin.
Yes.
Councilmember Brinker.
No.
Councilmember Brandon. Yes. Council, Mayor Long.
Side of the vote, sorry.
Yeah.
Oh, and I, I agree with Councilman uh Conklin, other professionals. We can always come back to it any time, but it's only written in paper, so, yes. Um. B, notice approval that the city's lead service line replacement. Let, let's, let, mispronounced. Thanks for catching that.
I was whispering.
No, no, I, I appreciate it. So U G I says doing line replacement. Um, I'll pass the M Wayne. That one is valid. My, the right reference page, um.
No, you got it back.
Oh, hi, you're right, this system is going to be, this is on our lines, correct?
That's where the contract will be here.
Yeah. Okay. Um. Distribution of uh see that these mission forms, we don't have those, we have have to have those, I think I believe I made first. Any other new business away or where? Hey. For some uh P A G on the authorities, uh, we have the city authority meeting, Matt's, I believe, here somewhere. And for the agenda anyways. And uh letter from fire advisory board, so I'm assuming one of you gentlemen, because that's the letter from fire advisory board.
But uh, we're not exactly sure what letter that is.
Okay, it's a letter, letter from to gauge interest in regional inspiration of in interest, gauge interest in regional exploration of service.
Yeah, so uh beginning of the month, I sent out a letter to the neighborhood municipalities to gauge their interest in possibly joining with us and forming a regionalized fire service. Uh, I've gotten a few responses back. Giving it to the end of the month to see if any more respond, and that's about it at this point. And.
Any positive, positive responses?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. And uh, notice, U G I let uh notice the heating assistance programs are available on the city. It's cool as it is, I'm sure there are people out there who need it, so if you have U G I, reach out to them.
Did we have, did we find a running center? Did anyone open anything else? There's a couple that I saw it today.
Yeah, Salvation Army, Cara Montorzy. We have other ones.
Oh, sorry, yeah, I would say, I know Cara and Salvation Army, someplace else, I can't remember who, people could go, they, they stick everyone.
Anybody else have any other pretty good thoughts?